Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the October 22nd, 2025 City Council Meeting. I will ask everyone to please rise for the Canadian National Anthem. Be seated. We acknowledge that we are on traditional lands of the Treaty Four Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. City Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and administration may be attending the meeting today through videoconferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through videoconferencing of the following: Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Some delegations may attend the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with the following adjustments? To one, add the registered list of delegations. Two, waive notice for item MN25-15, reconsideration of City Council meeting dates for the 2026-2027 budget deliberations, and to be debated at this meeting. And that item MN25-16, city's tax and assessment system tasks, software upgrade and enhancement, be deemed read into the record to give notice that it will be debated by council at its November 5th, 2025 meeting. Counselor Radens, thank you. And seconder, Counselor Siklis.
Okay, and then I will ask the clerk to start the vote on waiving notice for item MN25-15. Like I said, this will require unanimous vote in favor for council to consider this item at the meeting today.
Through you, Mayor. The motion to waive notice is carried unanimously.
Thank you, and I will call the question on the approval of the agenda. Any opposed? Okay, that is carried. And can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 3rd and 8th, 2025 City Council meetings with the following correction to the October 3rd, 2025 minutes in relation to item CM25-17 to remove the words "in amendment" from the referral motion directing administration to prepare a supplemental report. And Counselor Flores, I think you had an adjustment as well.
Yeah, page 12 or 21, depending which one. There's just error in the vote count for the second reading of the bylaw. Third reading of the bylaw should...
For consent for third reading?
Yes, consent for the reading of the bylaw. There is a...
Okay, so that'll be added to a correction that we'll make. So I will have someone make a motion for what I read out there.
Do I need to say?
Sorry, yes. Can you say the specific correction?
Yeah, so it shows the votes against, as Counselors Akinyek, myself, and you, Mayor Baczynski. I recall that you voted in favor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, can I have someone move that motion? Counselor Flores and a seconder, Counselor Turnbull. Any other errors or omissions? I'll call the question. Any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate. As one item, regardless of the number of agenda items included in it, the consent agenda for this meeting includes the following items: CR25-131, 2026 Council and Committee Meeting Calendar, and CR25-132, Housing Accelerator Fund Update. I'll ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Counselor Rasevich and a seconder, Counselor Burton, thank you. Any opposed? Then that is carried. Okay, we will now consider item CR25-129, zoning bylaw amendment, 2110 King Street, and I will ask Counselor Siklis to please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. Good afternoon, everybody. The Regina Planning Commission met on October 14th, and administration brought forth a couple of recommendations to change the bylaw at two addresses, one at 2110 King Street and one at 1891 Dudney Avenue. The Commission agreed with those recommendations, and we bring those to you today.
Thank you, Counselor Siklis. Can I have someone move the report? Counselor Rasevich, do you wish to speak the report?
No.
No? Okay. Any questions from council on that report? Okay, seeing none, anything to close, Counselor Rasevich? Okay, with that, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the October 22nd, 2025 City Council Meeting. I will ask everyone to please rise for the Canadian National Anthem. Be seated. We acknowledge that we are on traditional lands of the Treaty for Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. City Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and administration may be attending the meeting today through videoconferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through videoconferencing of the following. Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Some delegations may attend the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. Can I have someone move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the Chair with the following adjustments? To, one, add the registered list of delegations. Two, waive notice for item MN 25-15, reconsideration of City Council meeting dates for the 2026-2027 budget deliberations, and to be debated at this meeting. And that item MN 25-16, Cities Tax and Assessment System Task Software Upgrade and Enhancement, be deemed read into the record to give notice that it will be debated by Council at its November 5th, 2025 meeting. Counsel Raddens, thank you. And Secondar, Counsel Siklis. Okay, and then I will ask the clerk to start the vote on waiving notice for item MN 25-15. Like I said, this will require unanimous vote in favor for Council to consider this item at the meeting today.
Through you, Mayor, the motion to waive notice is carried unanimously.
Thank you, and I will call the question on the approval of the agenda. Any opposed? Okay, that is carried. And can I have someone move a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 3rd and 8th, 2025 City Council meetings, with the following correction to the October 3rd, 2025 minutes, in relation to item CM 25-17, to remove the words "in amendment" from the referral motion directing Administration to prepare a supplemental report. And Counsel Flores, I think you had an adjustment as well.
Yeah, page 12 or 21, depending which one. There's just error in the vote count for the second reading of that bylaw. Third reading of the bylaw, it should...
For consent for third reading?
Yes, consent for the reading of bylaw, there is a...
Okay, so that'll be added to a correction that we'll make. So I will have someone make a motion for what I read out there.
Do I need to say?
Sorry, yes, can you say the specific correction?
Yeah, so on the, it shows the votes against, as Counsel Zekidniak, myself, and you, Mayor Bichinsky. I recall that you voted in favor.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, can I have someone move that motion? Counsel Flores, and a Secondar, Counsel Turnbull. Any other errors or omissions? I'll call the question, any opposed? And carried. Okay, we will now consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda is moved and voted upon without debate. As one item, regardless of the number of agenda items included in it, the consent agenda for this meeting includes the following items: CR 25-131, 2026 Council and Committee Meeting Calendar, and CR 25-132, Housing Accelerator Fund Update. I'll ask if any member wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for consideration and debate at this meeting. Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Counsel Rasovic, and a Secondar, Counsel Burton, thank you. Any opposed? Then that is carried. Okay, we will now consider item CR 25-129, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 2110 King Street. And I will ask Counsel Siklis to please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, good afternoon, everybody. The Regina Planning Commission met on October the 14th, and Administration brought forth a couple of recommendations to change the bylaw at two addresses, one at 2110 King Street and one at 1891 Dudeney Avenue. The Commission agreed with those recommendations, and we bring those to you today.
Thank you, Counsel Siklis. Can I have someone move the report? Counsel Rasovic, thank you, and a Secondar, Counsel Larry Mansonelli. Counsel Rasovic, you wish to speak the report?
No.
No, okay. Any questions from Council on that report? Okay, seeing none, anything to close, Counsel Rasovic? Okay, with that, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. And we will now consider item CR 25-130, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, 1891 Dudeney Avenue. Counsel Siklis, I think you touched on it a little bit, but I'll get you to introduce the report, please.
I did, I tried to do two in one. Through you, Mayor. Same situation here, the Administration brought to us a recommendation to make a small zoning bylaw change, and the Commission agreed to that and voted in favor of it.
Perfect, thank you. Can I have someone move the report? Counsel Mansonelli? And a Secondar? Counsel Rasovic? Okay, Counsel Mansonelli, would you like to speak to the report?
No, I guess it's good to see some action on Dudeney. Things are moving along, that's about all I got to say.
Okay, perfect. I see Counsel Zekidniak, I'll open up for questions, go ahead, Counsel Zekidniak.
Thanks. I understand that the purpose is to align the zoning of the subject property with adjacent land. I also understand that there was some level of public and stakeholder engagement, and we didn't hear anything from the Regina Warehouse Business Improvement Area. But what I'm curious about is, it mentions the subject property is occupied by Surplus Furniture and Rebellion Brewing. I'm curious about, like, was there... My assumption is that they would have been part of the engagement process, and so I just wanted to check in on that. Were these two commercial buildings approached, and they also didn't have any concerns? I just didn't see that as clearly articulated in the report, and I just wanted to understand.
Ms. Braden?
Thank you, through the Chair, yes, they were.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from Council members? Okay, seeing none, Counsel Mansonelli, would you like to close the debate?
Debate's closed, we can have the vote.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. We will now do third reading of bylaw 2025-68, the Safe Public Spaces Act Opt-In Bylaw. And Deputy Mayor Rasovic, can you please do final reading of the bylaw?
I move, seconded by Counsel Siklis, that bylaw number 2025-67 be read a third time.
Sixty-eight, yeah, it's sixty-eight.
Oh, sorry, mine had sixty-seven, sorry, sixty-eight.
Yeah, no, no worries, we'll have it at sixty-eight. Okay, with that, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor, the third and final reading of bylaw number 2025-68 is carried in a vote of eight to three. The following members voting in favor as follows. Counsel Siklis, Bezo, Mansonelli, Turnbull, Burton, Raddens, Rasovic, and Mayor Bichinsky. Those voting against were Counselors Fro, Zekidniak, and Flores.
Okay, thank you. We will now consider item CM 25-5, 2026 to 2029 City of Regina Strategic Report. I will introduce the report. So, today, I'm bringing forward a report that outlines the City of Regina's strategic plan for 2026 through 2029. The recommendation is for City Council to adopt the plan and supporting action plans as outlined in this report. This is a thoughtful and inclusive roadmap developed through extensive collaboration between Council and Administration that reflects competing priorities in our city. It puts residents first and is built on the values of what we hear in our community. Every decision we make under this framework will be guided by one question. How does this improve life for our residents now and into the future? The goal is to focus our priorities with clear direction across infrastructure, vibrancy, livability, and prosperity, and set the stage for intentional growth, community connection, and economic opportunity. These priorities are further supported by the principles of reconciliation, environmental sustainability, and IDEA, which stands for inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility. The plan balances visionary goals with fiscal responsibility, ensuring Regina remains among the most affordable cities in Canada. Supported by financial metrics and operational commitments, this serves as a blueprint for action and accountability and will guide our work through to 2029, ensuring transparency, progress, and measurable success. Council is dedicated to this ambitious, yet achievable, plan, and together, we're helping create a thriving city that everyone is proud to call home. And one last note is I want to give a public thank you to my colleagues. This was, this was a lot of work for Council to come together in a council that has different views, different backgrounds, and different experiences. And, and the words "competing priorities" was a common theme because we all are representing all residents of Regina, and we're trying to bring those voices together to prioritize the work we need to do in a common way. So a public thank you comes from me to you, all of my colleagues, for the work and the time that you all put in to bring this together and trying to set a focus and direction for our community, so thank you. And with that, I also want to thank Administration for their work to help us guide, guide our thoughts and our ideas, and what will turn into tangible actions for our community through Administration and all the work that we do. So thank you to everybody involved. I'm very excited to be bringing this forward and setting a direction for our city. And with that, I will move the report, and I will look for a Secondar, Counsel Siklis. And I think I've spoken enough on the report, so I will open up to any questions or comments from my colleagues. Counsel Zekidniak, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I also thought it was relevant to touch on the fact that this is, like, this is a living document in the sense, I don't know if that's the right term, but like, it will be revisited by Council. And so I wonder, I mean, you said you spoke enough, but perhaps you could touch on how Council will be like, holding ourselves accountable to this report and how it'll continue to manifest, like, the implementation of it.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. And so this isn't something that's set in stone, and it's always ultimately up to Council's votes and direction into how this is implemented and provides direction to the, to the city overall. You know, we do, we know that policy changes at all levels of government, and so we need to acknowledge that things may change, funding may change, and that may impact the way we make decisions. So it's a fair point to say that I think it would be irresponsible for us to just set it and forget it, so to speak. This is, this is a living document, and we will adjust as necessary.
And that there will be, you know, checkpoints for Council to continue to either hold ourselves accountable to the report, work on the report, or flesh out anything that needs additional details or information in there.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest thing I would highlight there is that we, we have a balanced scorecard that will be coming annually as a checkpoint to measure the success in different areas, and, and we will determine if those are the right measures on, on an ongoing basis to make sure we're, we're adapting as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Turnbull, go ahead.
Thank you. Chair, this was a lot of hard work, and I would say that I'm cautiously optimistic. But when we have these beautiful reports, you want to make sure that they're meaningful and that they actually come with actions, and they do shape how we make our decisions and priorities within the cities. So I do have some questions on how we plan on using this. How will our strategic plan shape our decision-making?
Who, who are you, are you asking Admin for that one?
Yeah, I will ask Administration for that.
Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as Counselor Turnbull indicated, a strategic plan is just that, it's a plan. It sets out your high-level priorities and your objectives for this term, going to 2029. And I think that it will guide you in your decisions, but I, I have to stress from my perspective, you cannot see it as locking you into anything. It's got to be flexible enough that it can change due to circumstances. Those could be new priorities that have come up before you. They could be funding resource requirements that you can't meet at this time, or maybe you're faced with a number of competing priorities. So I, it is, it's your guide, that's what you use. But I think it would be erroneous to suggest to anybody that everything in there is locked in for certainty because it is an evolving document, as Counsel Zekidniak said. And in eighteen months' time, you may have some different priorities based on the current fiscal or other environmental factors that you're facing, so. I'll, I'll leave it there.
To the Chair, I was, would like to know from the administrative side, because you said that's Council's guide. However, the deliverables and the measuring sticks have been very clearly communicated to us that that is Administration's work. So therefore, I would like to know how this document will guide your work as you have ownership of those parts of the plan.
Well, through the Mayor, as with anything, it is your plan and it is ours to implement, keeping in mind that we can only implement that which we have time, control, and money for. So that's where we will find, have to come back at times and say, we don't have enough resources to do this this year, we may have to defer things. But we take it that that is your guide, that's your prerogative, and then your budget will reflect that, and we will implement from there. But again, we can't implement without resources.
But the deliverables and delivery, the projects, were clearly communicated that that is Administration's work, and you're saying that this is Council's?
No, I'm, I think what I'm saying, Counselor, is that Council has given us their objectives and their priorities. We have said to meet those, these are the actions we will undertake, and we will undertake them provided we have the time and resources for that.
Okay, and then with the measurements which haven't been quite, will, will they come back to Council on how we plan to measure our values?
Well, I'm, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Tran, but I will say that your values are value statements. My experience in strategic plans over the past thirty years, it's very difficult to try and measure and pinpoint values. The values are there as an overarching statement that, you know, I want my kids to go to university. That's a value statement, education is important. But it, again, has to be balanced with a number of things, and everybody has different perspectives on it. That may not be answering your question, maybe Mr. Tran has a better explanation in that regard.
Mr. Tran, go ahead.
Through the Chair, if your question is if we are coming back to Council on a regular cadence to bring forward the results of the measures that we have identified, yes, we will be doing that on a yearly basis. Our plan is to do that prior to the start of every budget cycle going forward so that Administration and Council knows where we are in the progress of that plan. And yes, we, so we will be bringing that back to everyone on a yearly basis.
And will you show us the, how we're measuring these things, our measuring matrices, and how we, we do that? I know, like, for instance, how are we going to measure accessibility? Is that going to be through having a certain standard or like, the sustainability? Like, how, how are we measuring those? Like, are you going to show us the matrix you're using?
Through the Chair. I'll go to Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Thank you, I just, thank you, Mayor, to members of Council. I just want to clarify, the document, as I understand it, doesn't talk about values, it talks about principles. There's three principles: reconciliation, IDEA, and environmental stewardship. And as I've said before to you, those values, and we may be, we'll be working on something to try to articulate that. But again, those principles, I keep saying values now, the principles are not a veto. The principles are something that you aspire to and say, every time we do something, this is what we're looking to do. But you, you, you can't look at the principle and say, well, it doesn't meet that one, so we can't do it, or it's straying from it, in my opinion. Council may decide otherwise, but the principles are there as some part of the aspirational statements about what are the things you value in shaping your decisions. But not each and every decision is necessarily going to coincide or mirror with those values or principles because they will conflict at times.
And I guess maybe just to speak on, just, because I think it was about the measurement piece, and I think what will be highlighted is, you know, Administration is tasked, we, we have them tasked with, with working on those measurements. If Council feels that a measurement isn't an accurate way to, to depict something or to, to bring back that information, we can bring that feedback forward. This is, that's that iterative process that, you know, that evolving and, and living document. So, you know, I think we're tasked, Administration, with, with making sure they set that up based on our plan, that we've worked together on. And if there's something that doesn't hit the mark in terms of what we're measuring or how we're measuring, Council can work with Admin to say, you know, I think this may be a better way to measure that. Mr. Nichol, sorry, go ahead.
Right, thank you. And just further to that, Mayor, the balanced scorecard that you will see should articulate that. And so you may look at the balanced scorecard and say, hmm, that doesn't really measure exactly what we want, or we think that that's deficient in some way. So again, we take the feedback because this is your strategic plan that's guiding the city, and it's our job to administer it, and we need to do that in the way that meets what you're looking for.
Okay. Excuse me. Yes, the balanced scorecard I was referencing, actually, I was wondering with the balanced scorecard. I am very much in favor of measuring, and I think it's a great way to go. I was just wondering if the balanced scorecard would be coming back to Council, that should have been my question.
Mr. Tran, go ahead.
Through the Chair, yes, as I mentioned before, that'll be part of the package and part of the measurement tool that comes back to Council and Administration on a yearly basis.
Yeah, so, and then will we be using that balanced scorecard and these principles to rate our capital projects with our matrix we're using with, with Coilers? Or will, will we be rating our, what we go ahead using this developed principles, that way?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Through the Chair, so, as this is just being finalized now, the, the process with Coilers has already been designed and implemented, so we're well into that process. If Council wishes, and, and you'll get an idea of how our assessment criteria worked. If you feel that it needs to be tweaked because it doesn't align with your strategy, then we will take that feedback.
I think my general concern is if it, is there a principle or it isn't? So if these are our principles, we need to actually figure out how to use them, how to measure them, how to make them apply. And we did spend a lot of time with a whole bunch of people at the table and with Admin to come up with this with a lot of different conflicting priorities. So we did that work, so now it has to be meaningful work, and I guess that, that's where I'm coming from, from this, is how are we going to use it?
Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Again, we can take that back, Counselor, we can work on that to see what it is that would best meet Council's needs. And again, I apologize for sounding like a broken record. It's one thing to be able to measure the principles, but again, I have to stress that I don't believe you're in good standing if you think of those as a veto on anything. They are there to influence how you're driving at a decision. For example, just, I, I've said it before in the floor of Council, so I'll say it again. And I apologize in advance, but, you know, we had discussions on, on the repurchasing of buses. Well, you may have a, you may have an environmental stewardship principle that says that we want to go with electric buses, but then you have to balance that with other realities that you may be facing that maybe you didn't face when the initial decision came forward. that you may be facing, that maybe you didn't face when the initial decision came forward. But all of a sudden, there's something else that's happened, or you don't have the cash, or there's a new tax, or whatever. And so, you have to be able to say, "I still have that principle, I just can't do it right now," so.
I'll, I'll be clear, I don't, I'm not saying to use it as a veto, that's the point of the measure scorecard, is so that we can look at how something falls in all of our principles and make it a educated decision, not as veto power, so, just to clarify that.
I think, just if I could say one thing, I think one thing to remember is that we haven't approved this yet for admin to take this on fully, and this is a 2026 to 2029. So, I think it's fair to say that, you know, there's still a time period to kind of refine this, because it technically hasn't been approved, and, you know, until we put it to an approval today. So, just, just as a context for that. Mr. Anderson, did you have a comment to that? Sorry?
Thank you, and through the Mayor, just to clarify, Mr. Tran, let me know that Colliers did get a sneak peek of the principles and did their best to work them into our process, so, just to follow up on that.
And then, lastly, with our three principles, I know that we do, we have or will have the committees for them, the accessibility committee, and some points sustainability committee, and we do have an elders committee. Will they be reviewing our measurables and our values? Or have they already?
Mr. Tran, go ahead.
Through the Chair, these committees have not reviewed the measures that we have put forth. But again, I would stress what the Mayor was saying. As we progress through the reporting of these, if we feel that they aren't the right measures, we certainly can, or ahead of time, we also can engage with those committees as well to get their opinions as well.
Informally request that those measures do go to those three committees as our expert committees to, to look through how we are measuring things as a city.
Mr. Nickel?
Through you, Mayor, again, I just want to be clear. We have an elders council, but it has not been tasked with reviewing these. We do not have a sustainability committee, yet, but we do not have one. We have the accessibility advisory committee, but that was set up for other purposes. So, maybe we can, maybe we'll find another way. But I don't want anybody who's watching today to think that all of a sudden we have these new committees, we don't.
Okay, um, there, there was a motion to establish a sustainability committee, so it is coming. And then, yes, since it wasn't mentioned, do you want to talk a little bit about our fi, financial strategic imperative? I feel like that should probably be highlighted.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, through the Chair. Maybe I'll best articulate it, is my reading of council's wishes is that we remain a low-tax environment as a municipality. And so, our, our strategic imperative is to remain in the bottom 25% of what we're deeming our comparator cities, which are major cities in Western Canada, Calgary, Edmonton, Saskatoon, Winnipeg, and then Ottawa is one in the east. We feel our, offer the very, a similar level of service. So, that's the, my understanding of the strategic imperative.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks so much for, everyone, like, it really was a wonderful process going through this with all of council and administration and figuring out where we connect and what's important to us. And from now, in this point moving forward, knowing this is something we're going from, I think it's just really important to me that this just isn't a pretty picture or puff piece, and that it's actually meaningful, and that we follow it up, because it did take a lot of work for us to get here. And we do represent our communities and our cities and making sure that we, we do put the, the elbow grease into making this work. And it, nothing can make me prouder on this term if we actually use this strategic plan and make it meaningful and actually have it not be a puff piece, but something we can actually stand by and be proud of.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, just to close, again, reiterate the thanks to everybody and their work on this. You know, to iterate what Counselor Turnbull's saying, I look forward to enacting this with administration working collaboratively to make sure that we, we use this as a guiding tool for us to make good decisions for the city. So, thank you for that, and with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote, please.
Through you, Mayor Bishinsky, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we will now consider item MN 25-15, reconsideration of city council meeting dates for the 2020... Sorry, for the 2026, 2027 budget deliberations. So, I will introduce the motion. So, um, council is looking to amend the, and commence the budget deliberations from December 15th to the 19th at 9:00 a.m. each day, and set the delegation registration deadline to Thursday, December 11th, 2025, by no later than 12 o'clock p.m. So, we're looking to essentially designate that, that entire week in December to budget deliberations. I will move the motion and look for a seconder for that. Counselor Mancinelli, thank you. Any questions from council members on the report? Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
Um, I just want to confirm with administration, like, this all sounds reasonable and fair to me, but I always want to hear from administration that this doesn't cause any concerns changing the schedule at this time. And so, that's, I'm just looking for their feedback on this proposal.
Go ahead, Mr. Nickel.
Uh, through you, Mayor, administration's good with this.
Yeah, okay, thanks, I support it.
Thank you, Counselor Zakidniak. Okay, so this will be, and sorry, to clarify, this will be on the reconsideration motion, because there will be a few steps to this. So, I don't see any further questions on the reconsideration. Okay, so we're gonna... Okay, so yeah, sorry, this was questions on the entire motion, but I do not see any. So, with that, there'll be two votes. City council will vote first to determine if it wishes to reconsider the resolution it adopted at its March 5th, 2025, meeting on CR 25-15, 2025, Q2 to Q4 council and committee meeting calendar. The clerk will now put that resolution up on the screen. Okay, so the text in red is what we're looking at here. So, if the first vote to reconsider the resolution on the screen is carried, city council will then take an additional vote. The additional vote will be to, will be a revote on the March 5th, 2025 motion with the amendment, as I mentioned earlier, to commence budget deliberations from December 15th to the 19th at 9:00 a.m. each day and set the delegation registration deadline to Thursday, December 11th, 2025, by no later than 12 o'clock p.m. If the additional vote on the March 5th, 2025 motion is amended, or is, as amended is lost, then the December 2025 budget deliberation dates will remain unchanged to be held from December 17th to the 19th. Counselor Bezo, did you get your vote? Oh, there you go, yeah.
Through you, Mayor, the motion to reconsider is carried unanimously.
Okay, and then the second vote will be on the motion. I think it's on just below here. So, that, that is the changes that I had read out there, so it'll be on the screen from March 5th, 2025, as amended. And with that, I will ask the clerk to start the vote. Counselor Zakidniak?
Through you, Mayor, the motion as amended is carried unanimously.
Okay, we will now consider bylaws. So, we'll be considering bylaw number 2025-52, the Licensed Nonprofit Childcare Center Tax Exemption Bylaw, 2025. 2025-59, the Community Nonprofit Tax Exemption for the Regina Public Library Bylaw, 2025. 2025-66, the Regina Administration Amendment Bylaw, 2025, number five. And 2025-71, the Annual Low-Income Municipal, Municipal Property Tax Deferral Program Bylaw, 2025, number three. I will ask Deputy Mayor Rasevich to do first reading of the bylaws, please.
Okay, I move seconded by Counselor Froh that bylaws number 2025-52, number 2025-59, number 2025-66, and number 2025-71 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, first reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rasevich, can you please do second reading of the bylaws?
I move seconded by Counselor Burton that bylaws number 2025-52, number 2025-59, number 2025-66, and number 2025-71 be read a second time.
Thank you, I will ask the clerk to start the vote
Through you, Mayor, second reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rasevich, can you please do consent for third reading of the bylaws?
I move seconded by Counselor Turnbull that bylaws number 2025-52, number 2025-59, number 2025-66, and number 2025-71 go to third reading at this meeting.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, consent for third reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously as required by law.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rasevich, can you please do final reading of the bylaws?
I move seconded by Counselor Flores that bylaws number 2025-52, number 2025-59, number 2025-66, and number 2025-71 be read a third time.
Thank you, I'll ask the clerk to start the vote.
Through you, Mayor, the third and final reading of the bylaws is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Counselor Sikles. And a seconder, Counselor Flores, and the opposed, and carried.